Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Welcome to the special public meeting of the Cincinnati Public School Board for December 14th, 2022. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. We have a full agenda this evening of very important items. I'm going to move quickly past these three-month board priorities, just to note that we will spend a lot of this evening talking about the governance coaching work in our board structure for next year. And the priorities we've had here really went through the beginning of November, and hopefully we'll have a chance to set a new group of these come January. So tonight, moving right now to item C, number one, for the first discussion topic, this is Continued Guardrails Discussion and Recommendation for Approval. For the last, really, almost seven months, our board and superintendent have been working with the Council of Great City Schools on a governance framework that will end with us having a clear set of priorities and measurable goals that represent the vision and values of the community. I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this, and it really has been seven months of work, with several all-day retreats, several extended board meetings, 25 different focus groups that pairs of our board conducted together, a community-wide survey that heard from many, many, many different parts of our community. And we had a big win last week on Monday, where we adopted five goals for the next three years that focus on student outcomes, and we did that with a 7-0 vote. And I think it is, I just want to thank everyone, from the council to our superintendent and treasurer to my colleagues on the board, for really finishing an important body of work. We have one part of that process left, which is adopting a set of guardrails, which is a way that we try to capture values that need to be preserved or honored in our community that might be related to but also a little bit separate from student academic outcomes. So people should have received on Monday from Phyllis a document, and I think this is also posted to Board Docs. I have hard copies here for anybody who would like one. But what is on this document is a consolidated list of every suggestion that I received from board members. So people remember that the goals went through 7-0, the guardrails, people had a lot of ideas about how to make them better. And so we deferred the decision on the guardrails to the meeting today. Let me pause for a second. Rob, I think Cindy is probably in the waiting room, or she's on, and you brought her in. That's great. For anybody who may be watching at home or here in our building with us, I want to welcome Cindy Ellsburn from the Council of Great City Schools, who's been the governance coach working with our board these past seven months. So I want to start by just trying to hopefully propose a way forward on one of the biggest issues. One of the biggest issues was concerns around negative framing. So people feeling like both they as board members and that they heard in the community engagement, you know, this language around "the superintendent shall not" or "thou shalt not" just felt a little too negative, and these would be maybe more inspiring, more helpful if there were a more positive framing. So one that I wanted to see if people, how people felt about it, is the item that's listed first on the list. And so it says there at the top, "The following are non-negotiables for the superintendent." And then it lists the needs of the whole child, and then the other items that we talked about. And so I wanted to see if board members wanted to comment on that first proposed framing, yes, I like this, here's why, no, I don't like this, here's why, I have a question about it, here's what the question is. Is anyone able to respond to just that first proposal? Mrs. Weinberg, followed by Mr. Morosky.
I would say for the very first one, how you included "The following are non-negotiables for the superintendent," I know that I was one of the individuals who stated about the negative concept, and I think I like that wording a little bit better, "The following are non-negotiables." So if I could provide the input, I would say that I like that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Weinberg. Mr. Morosky?
Just a quick question. Are we talking about just the A through D or this A through U?
A fair question. So what I did in putting these on the sheet was not edit or take off anybody's suggestion. Anybody who suggested anything, it went on here unedited. The issue I wanted to start with was, I think, the biggest theme in our last discussion was how do we do this the right way without it sounding so negative all the time? And so one, the very first suggestion on there is a way of doing that. And so the question I was asking that Mrs. Weinberg was responding to was, do people like or not like that alternative framing? If it does what it's intended to do, it's not really changing content, but it's changing tone and making it less negative, but still getting the work done.
And they all four essentially do that. Yeah, okay, I hear your saying.
And do you have a positive or negative reaction?
My opinion hasn't really changed. I think the original ones are fine.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Morosky. Any other comments on that first proposal? Ms. Bolton?
I think in an almost billion-dollar operation, the word "non-negotiable" is a nonstarter. And I don't mean to say that everything is negotiable, but very frankly, everything gets weighed and balanced or out of balance. And "non-negotiable," I like the strength of it, but I also don't like it if I hear it from a principal, say that to a parent. It's that tonality, I know we're struggling with words, but this, these are, you know, this is important work. So that would just be part of my reaction. I absolutely did not like the biblical reference or the Ten Commandment kind of thing, thought that was inappropriate, but "will not," "should not," "will not," whatever, I think, might have a little bit better approach. I would just leave it at that.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Before we go any further, any other reactions just to that first framing, people who like it and why, don't like it and why? Dr. Moffett?
Well, I'll just kind of restate my position very briefly, in that I think that I don't like the "thou shalt not." I think that the Council of Great City Schools is great. I really appreciate all the work that they've done. However, we do need to be cognizant of the fact that this is our community, and they provided a great framework, but it is just that. It is a framework. It is not set in stone. It is not a commandment. It's just a way for us to take the concept and the principle and apply it to what we see fit within our community. I will also, I don't know if anybody has those pages, I was looking for mine, they're on my computer, but the community provided us 36 pages of feedback, and in that feedback, there are multiple examples of how it could be reworded without saying "thou shalt not." And so, again, I said this before, I think that the community spoke very loudly in their repeated comments that "thou shalt not" was not our language, and it was not very comfortable for them, but they also did give some suggestions. A few of them are listed here, so that's just my opinion.
Thanks, Dr. Moffett. Anybody who hasn't spoken, Mr. Craig or Vice President Jones, if not, that's fine. But, no, okay. So here's the plan, I think, to try to move through this. I don't know where we're going to land. My hope is that we can adopt four, maybe five of these with a fully unanimous support. If not, I think, hopefully with as many yeses as possible, because I think multiple things are true at once. I think as much unanimity on these as possible is a good thing. I think that's always true. I think it's particularly true with something of this priority level. I also think it's important to get clarity and move forward. And so I hope that we can get to 7-0 or as close to 7-0 as possible. And so the way we're going to work through this is just by using parliamentary procedure and by using Robert's rules. And so I'll invite, you know, overview of how this works. We did this last time, but just in case it's helpful, anybody can make a motion for adopting one of these guardrails. Anybody can second it. We'll have some time for discussion. People can speak a first time, and they can respond to what others say. Once there's a main motion on the floor, anybody's welcome to introduce an amendment to that motion, if there's a piece that they would like to see changed. The way amendments work, an amendment needs a second. There's also then discussion on that amendment. It can feel kind of ponderous and take a minute. I think this was true during parts of the meeting last Monday. But I think the advantage that this process has is we're a deliberative body. It makes sure everybody gets a chance to put their ideas on the table, and it makes sure that whatever the decision is, is reflecting a clear majority. And again, I hope we can get to 7-0. And so we'll do one guardrail at a time, and I want to see, is there somebody who would like to introduce a first motion?
I have, I just have a question about our process in general before. You asked about that, but given what you just said--
No, I think a question is great. Yep.
Okay. So what your question was, was how did we, how did we want to respond to the first section? But there's all the rest of this. So I'm confused--
Sure.
--if we introduce a motion now, exactly what are we introducing?
It's up to the board member. So you could make a motion to say, I would like, I move that one of our guardrails be guardrail A.
Okay.
And we would then have a second, we would have discussion, we'd have a vote. You could say, I move that we introduce guardrail O, and that we make that one of our guardrails. You could say, I move that we do guardrails E, F, G, and H. We'll see if there's a second, we'll have a discussion, and we will use the parliamentary procedure to figure out where the will of the board is.
Okay.
Yeah, Dr. Moffett?
I'm just still a little confused, because I, and I don't know if this is the cart or the horse, but should we agree to not use "thou shalt not" as a group first, rather than to pick and choose some that have "will not," some that have "aspire to," some, I just feel like it's kind of all over the place. And I don't also see, I wanted some explanation on some of the guardrails submitted by people, though I don't hear that opportunity to speak for that, for them defending what they, or not, but for them, for us to discuss what they've said. But I would like to agree or not agree that we are using "thou shalt not" language as a group first, and then pick the language that we're using, and then ask people to talk about what they, because three people have submitted very different guardrails. Some of them are the same, myself and Ms. Bolton, we have something that are similar, but I would like to hear her discussion around hers to know about, maybe it could be incorporated with mine. But I don't know, are we agreeing to use "thou shalt not" language or no?
So I think, a couple thoughts. I think one is, given where I think, what I just heard and given our discussion last time, I would be shocked if there are any "thou shalt not" guardrails that get adopted. I don't think anybody, myself included, is advocating for including those. I think that as we work through the process, all the issues you're raising should come out. So if, for example, someone has some questions about a particular guardrail, there will be time to ask any or all of those questions in the discussion section before there's a vote taken on it. So I want to, if there are procedural questions, I'm happy to answer them, but then I want to give it a try, because I think it will create some clarity and move things forward for people. Procedural question, Mr. Morosky? Ms. Bolton?
No, 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 I was going to move.
Okay, let me just see if Ms. Bolton had a question about process.
Committing our guardrails to five or fewer?
I think it's going to be whatever the body decides. The advice, the advice is to have five or fewer, because the more, the more priorities you add, the more you dilute your focus.
Thank you.
But I think it'll be whatever the group votes for. Okay. So is there then a motion to introduce one guardrail to start with? Mr. Morosky?
I would move to accept I through L.
So we have a motion to adopt I through L. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Now we're at discussion. Anybody have a discussion they would like to have on guardrails I through L?
I have a question. So in selecting I, for Member Morosky, what is different between E and I for you that you chose? Is it just the "aspire to" versus "will not"? Because "will not," to me, sounds much like what you had shared before as a command, as a demand of the superintendent versus, you know, like, it sounds like it's telling the superintendent not to do something versus, I'm just trying to understand.
Like, you know--
I thought that was--
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and, you know, with all due respect to everybody, like I've said numerous times, so I plan on saying it now and then not saying it again, if it's all the same, is, I feel the "will not" phrasing gives the superintendent bandwidth to do her job, and that superintendent will aspire to is more directive, and that just makes, I'm just one, you know, it makes me uncomfortable. And so I like I through L for a couple notable reasons that I do think are different than the original, especially L, which includes local women, minority marketplace, et cetera. I think that's important. I like the phrasing a little better. I don't think it's quite as negative. I mean, I came, I came to see what everybody was saying the last meeting regarding the negative aspect of it, even though I was kind of fine with it. I did come to see what everyone was saying. I think this is a little less than that, but, you know, that's it. At the end of the day, I do think it's important that these are not directives, and I don't think that these are directives as much as good guardrails, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Thank you. Did you have other questions, Dr. Moffett? I thought I recognized you, but maybe I recognize Ms. Morosky.
What I was asking for was, did you, the difference for me between E and I was that I spoke about civic engagement, career opportunities, and then E specifically talked about emotional wellness. And so my question to Mike was not, was that, did you just like the wording on I and that it included a little bit more differently, or was it just the start of it? It wasn't to necessarily ask you to explain that. It was, did you like, were there words in E that you liked versus words in I as to why you proposed that? That was my question.
Other way around, words in I that I liked better than E?
Correct. So that was--
You know, I think they're, quite frankly, fairly similar. You know, the biggest addition would be career opportunities and leadership development. But I just, you know, to your point that you brought up before I made the motion, to be perfectly frank, I thought, I think it's important that we talk about these as a group and not go through here and pick four between A through U for the next six hours. And so I thought it was important to start, and I personally like those, these four, just kind of, they're worded the best. But I do like, I do like, I do like E through H, because I feel like E through H accomplishes the same thing wording-wise that I liked about the original guardrails, which was the guardrail aspect, because E through H also gives some of that bandwidth, too, I think. So yeah, I like the wording the best, especially, again, just to repeat, I like L a lot better than any of the other financial ones on here.
Yeah, I like that, too.
Vice President Jones?
Yes. I think, I know there's a motion on the floor, and I think I agree 100% with what Mr. Morosky is saying. I do want to add, the term "non-negotiable" was something that was presented to us by the council as a guideline for, and that's based on how they have operated. I do really appreciate what I heard Ms. Bolton say at the last meeting about the strength of the district. I think what I through L does is it kind of softens it, but not weakens what we're trying to say. And so for me, it still, you know, when we talk about, we don't want to give directives, and that's what it does for me. It doesn't give directives, but it's clearly presented as a way of saying, these are the things that we absolutely must do. And so I like that. And so my question and follow-up, so if the motion is to accept I through L, but we want to add one, is that a different motion?
That's correct. So once we have I through L, and people would like a fifth guardrail--
Okay.
No problem. Let's talk about what the fifth guardrail should be. Any other, I have a comment or question on the motion on the floor, but I want to go last. Anybody who has not gone yet have a question or comment? Okay, so I can go. I just, I wanted to just check. There is not a lot of content differences, I think, between I through L and A through D, but A through D gets a little bit away from the negative language, and that, I have to tell you, I'm fine with either of those two, but I want to try to bring along as many people as we possibly can. And so what I wanted to ask, is there, is there anybody for whom, like, if we used that "The following are non-negotiables for the superintendent" instead of "the superintendent will not," is that, is that significant enough to anyone that it would make a difference in your vote? And if so, I wanted to ask about it, and if not, then that's okay. Yeah, so the motion on the floor is for I through L. I through L starts with the language "the superintendent will not."
Okay.
It doesn't say "the superintendent shall not," it doesn't say "thou shalt not." It's not quite as charlatan-heston as some of the earlier versions that we had, and it might be that it's fine, in which case, I'm not going to create an issue. I love it. I think this is great. I'm proud of the work we've done. Let's talk about a fifth guardrail. What I wanted to check is, because it still says "will not," like, is that too negative for anybody still? And it sounds like, no, and that's great, and that it means that we've taken back enough charlatan-heston that we're in a better spot. And so I will just withdraw my idea. Any other discussion before we vote on the motion for I through L? Ms. Bolton?
One of the positives of almost everything, all of the language that's before us, virtually all of it is rooted in board policy, and much of it is rooted in kind of common practice over a number of years as to what we value. So I think it captures kind of where there's been also that connection with the community over a period of time. So I think the community can see itself in almost every one of the items before us, and I would be supportive of the I through L for some of the reasons that have been raised. But I think the community can see itself in these, and that makes it important for us.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Rob, I'm going to, I believe this is already posted to Board Docs, but in the event that it isn't, I'm forwarding you an email. Would you be able to put this on the screen when you get it? And it's the, it is the, what we're looking at, again, this is the consolidated list of the requests everyone had. Okay, so we have had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. I don't think there's any other discussion, I just want to check one last time, and there are no amendments that have been proposed. So Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please, or the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, 7-0. Thank you, everybody. Great job. Moving to our next item on the agenda, we're going to talk about committees. Vice President Jones?
I think--
No, sorry, I lied. We're not moving on. I got, I got overeager. I was--
Technical.
No, no, point of order, point of order. It's good, it's good. I got so excited that we had 7-0 that I lost track of space and time. So the next thing is, are there motions for a fifth guardrail? Ms. Bolton?
I would move, and I, and I don't care if it's one that is very lengthy and specific or one that is just very short. Number of days now, and watching way too much information TV, I have become even more concerned about absenteeism during COVID and post-COVID, and also knowing the difficulties that we have in our attendance and absenteeism. So in whatever form it would take, I would hope that we could reintroduce something we'd had early on the discussion, which was something about absenteeism. And there are a couple on here, or several on here, that speak to it.
Ms. Bolton, for the purpose of discussion, could you pick one of those?
I would be too humble to pick the one that I really want.
You can make any motion on any item that you like, and if you don't want to make a motion, that's fine. I will invite anybody else who wants to make a motion.
I'll make the motion that talks about not only district-wide absenteeism as a focus for the superintendent, but also other things at site level, because one of the things I'm excited about with the superintendent is the focus on the sites. But again, I'm open to either. Is it O?
Yes.
So you're making a motion for the guardrail that says the superintendent--
I'll do whatever the vice president tells me to do.
"The superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism or disregard at school sites inadequate family involvement, too few partnerships, or less productive contracts, or undue limited access to our school facilities or decision-making."
Done, moved.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor for O. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. So we have a first and a second. We have now discussion on guardrail O. Mr. Morosky?
I am, I want to vote in favor of O, and I just wanted to say why. First of all, we have heard the challenge of absenteeism on student achievement, I mean, forever, but especially in the past two years. And if you've been on the Policy Committee the past three, two or three years, it's at the heart of a lot of what we've talked about. If you look at efforts statewide, you know, a lot of the efforts are focused on this. And the thing that's so difficult about it, if I may, absenteeism that is, is if we were to talk about social determinants of education, and this is maybe using too much of my day job hat, but that's how I think about it, absenteeism is like the social determinant that we have very little to no control over. We have some, we do, and through policy and innovative transportation, et cetera, we can, I think, address it. But I think it is, I don't think, I know it is the thing. And the reason I like O, because it's obviously P as part of it, too, O kind of takes on pieces of N, P, Q, and the other ones are kind of already cooked up in I through L, but I like that O, you know, I do think family involvement and partnerships are part and parcel of it. So I just wanted to put my vote of favor out there now and tell folks why.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Other discussion on the motion for O? Ms. Craig?
This is, this is more of a question of just grammatically, so I understand it correctly. We think the disregard at school sites, the inadequate involvements, the too few partnerships, are those all for the individual school sites, or are we saying that's separate?
At school sites.
Okay. Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Other discussion? I will share, for my part, I'm going to support whatever the will of the board is, and I fully support the idea of tackling chronic absenteeism. I am a little concerned with how much is packed in here. It feels a little bit like it's a fifth guardrail masquerading as five guardrails. It mentions not just absenteeism, but family involvement, and partnerships, and contracts, and school access, and decision-making. So I would feel a little bit better if we could narrow it slightly, but again, I'm going to support whatever the will of the board is. I also want to just acknowledge that the inadequate family involvement gives me a very particular reaction. I'm not sure it does anybody else, but it feels blaming of families. And I think sometimes, sometimes families can do more, sometimes we can do more to make sure our schools-- Sometimes we can do more to make sure our schools are inviting places for parents or that meetings are available at times when parents aren't working. And sometimes parents would love to be involved, but they need more from us. Um, I have never met a family or a parent who doesn't want what's best for their kids. Um, and so there's something about this from like a, like a values perspective that, that trips something for me. That may be perhaps idiosyncratic for me, given my experience. Um, but I'm going to support the will the board. Um, but if there were an amendment that might narrow the scope of this a little bit or address some of the, the beliefs we have about families and our responsibilities with families, um, it certainly would make me feel a little bit better. Any other, um, discussion on the motion? Dr. Moffett?
Are we just talking about O or are we talking about revisions to, potential revisions to O? So are we just talking about O as it's written or any amendment?
It's, it's great. You could actually do either. So we're, we're in, where the, the main motion on the floor is to adopt O. Um, we can discuss people, how people feel about O. That's what I was doing. You, anybody could also make an amendment to O or, sorry, offer an amendment. We'd have to see if there's support for it. Um, but you could do either of those things. Or you could decide it's fine and vote to approve it. Any other discussion or amendments on O? Were you finished, Dr. Moffett?
Well, I, since you, were you, I, I do agree with you in that, and sometimes it happens where Ben and I agree. But I do agree with you that it's just packed fully. And I think that it also, um, the fact that Board Member Craig had to say, are we talking about too few partnerships? Where is that? Is it the schools or is it the district? I think it's, um, very ambiguous as to what our direction is. And I would like to see it be, uh, a little bit more focused. So I guess I'm offering an amendment to it in that, um, the superintendent will not ignore district-wide, district-wide chronic absenteeism, um, at the school site. Like just give, I kind of like just leaving it there because that's talking about absenteeism. But I'm open to this.
So there's, this is, this is, uh, right in keeping with, with, um, kind of the process, so I just want to make sure I'm hearing it right. It's the, the amendment that's been offered is that O would now read, the superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at the school site.
Yes, at the school site. And I almost, and I'm, I'm open to more discussion about it. But I mean, maybe at our lowest performing schools. I don't know if this is the space to drive that down a little further or do we not do that here?
It's, it's whatever you'd like, however you believe it should read, you can make that amendment.
Well, I'm open. I just think we need to amend it.
Okay, so let's, so for the purpose of discussion, we can, we can just say there's been a motion to amend O so that it reads, the superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at the school site. Is there a second for that amendment?
Say that, say that again. I'm sorry.
It's okay. This, um, so the amendment that has been proposed is that O would now read as follows. The superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at the school site.
Period.
Period. Is there a second for that amendment? We can have discussion. We just, for us to do that, somebody has to second the amendment. So Vice President Jones has seconded the amendment. Now is there discussion on the amendment? Mr. Craig?
So what we are discussing is the offer of the amendment so that it would then come back to Eve to ultimately, to Board Member Bolton to ultimately decide whether or not to amend her motion, right?
So we'd vote on the amendment. Like we, we would vote on the amendment. Um, if a majority accepts that amendment, then the main motion is as amended. And we would vote on that as amended motion.
And have discussion.
And we'd have discussion before we did that. Yeah, and now Ms. Bolton can vote however she likes. I can vote however I like and everybody is welcome.
So it's not a friendly amendment?
Uh, well, I guess we should ask, Ms. Bolton, is it, is it a friendly amendment?
No, I mean, I, no. Does it, it, no, we have to-
I guess I assumed it wasn't a friendly amendment because it does take out things like, so some of the other pieces that I read.
Some of the stuff I think we probably need to, whatever.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so then, um, we, we, again, where we are, we have an amendment. It's been seconded. We have discussion on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment further before we vote on it?
I do have another question. I just have another question for clarification. We can have more than the five guardrails. Um, I, I made that amendment with the understanding that we, that there are other guardrails to add. I don't want to just completely dismiss what we took out. If we, if you're saying that we can propose another guardrail other than the five, like we can go beyond five.
This would be six.
Yeah, so I think, um, we can do whatever a majority of the board decides we want to do. Uh, I, I think the, um, we can do whatever the majority of the board decides.
But I, I mean, I took that out thinking that we could have another guardrail about the other things that we took out. But this particular one could speak specifically to absenteeism and then we just add one about partnerships and, but that was under the premise that we could have six or seven.
That's right. I think, I think you should, you can, if this is totally your call, um, there's a risk that if this amendment passes and then we pass it and then there isn't a majority for a sixth guardrail, that this would be it. Um, and that, that's your, it's your, you can withdraw the amendment, you can keep the amendment. It's totally up to you. Um, and actually, this is interesting for me because I don't know where it's going to land. Um, but I think that that's, it'll be wherever, wherever the majority of people want to be. Um, so would you like to keep the amendment and we can vote on it or do you want to withdraw?
Let's vote on it.
Okay.
Work of hand.
So we have a, we have a, the, um, this is now not, this is just to adopt the mo, sorry, to amend the motion that is on the floor so that it would now read, the superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at the school site. Would you call the vote on that amendment, Ms. Wagner?
Mr. Craig?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
No.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So now, I, Dr. Moffett, there's another way to do this too, which is there's another, uh, the main motion is still on the floor and it can be amended further. So if, for example, like what we now have, the main motion on the floor says, the superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at the school site. Somebody could amend it further to add something. Uh, and anybody is welcome to do that. Um, and if they don't, that's also okay. What we'll do is we'll vote on the, uh, motion as it's been amended. So would anybody like to introduce a further amendment? Mr. Morosky?
I would. Um, I move to amend, um, second motion, uh, to read, and Dr. Moffett will appreciate this, as will Ms. Bolton and Mr. Hoing, uh, to read, the superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at school sites,
There had to be one.
Wait for it.
Okay.
Paying special attention to family involvement or something along those lines. I don't particularly care what the, the wording is of that after, I just want the semicolon. Um, uh, but I, the family involvement piece, I feel like partnerships, we could, you know, less product- I, I did like the original, um, but I, I understand that there was a lot packed in there. I do feel, and I hear what you're saying, President Lindy, as well. I think there's a way to word it in such a way that it doesn't sound sort of shaming. And the only correction I would make to what you said is I think it's usually our fault. Uh, so, uh, if not, yeah. So, um, so I, I appreciate that. And so I feel like that's why I would like to have something in there as a guardrail so that we do kind of take it on and be like, we need to figure out within this bandwidth how to make these opportunities more readily available.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. So I'm going to read back what you said. Uh, and this is going to be an amendment that's been introduced. And the amendment is for the main motion to read as follows. The superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at school sites, semicolon, paying special attention to family involvement, period. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Mrs. Weinberg?
So with the suggestion, are we saying that we're stopping at family involvement? We're not including the other items as well?
So it would, it would be exactly like what just happened with chronic absenteeism and Dr. Moffett. That's just what the amendment says. If after that, somebody wants to put another semicolon as an amendment and add something else, they certainly can, they can move that. Um, but we, we, we'd have to see where it goes. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion on the amendment? Ms. Bolton?
We could also stop it there. And if indeed there was willingness to have a separate, uh, guardrail that would speak to some of the other issues that are important to be, uh, at each school site, we could do that as well. We don't have to keep doing the semicolon dance, do we?
That, that, we do, we can do whatever a majority of the board members decide we want to do. Um, so it can, um, semicolon or, or, or another one.
Because indeed there were things that were gone that probably will have to, uh, there might be some people wanting them back. But it might be stronger if it was just an additional amendment for the very reason that this, this original one got, uh, whittled down a bit.
Yeah, thank, I, um, thank you. Um, Vice President Jones?
Okay, I'm just trying to understand. So this, this is being presented, the motion is for an amendment based on, uh, and Mr. Morosky made that amendment. What I'm hearing is that there's potentially another amendment that would add another, not another amendment, but a, a suggestion that we add another guardrail. So my, my question to the group is, is are we, are we clear? Because I'm not. I'm, are we clear what guardrails are? And do, do we feel that, that, that everything has to fit under a guardrail scenario? And, and because some of these are just part of the core for, uh, performance, you know, performance stuff in the district anyway. And so I'm, I'm just trying to understand in terms of priority status, if, if there's a difference in, um, with the guardrail scenario and why it has to be a guardrail as opposed to part of what we address anyway in the district.
I, I think it's a very valid point. Uh, and I think that, um, my sense as board members are going to have different perspectives on exactly this issue. Um, and I think that what, what I would just encourage people to do is vote what you believe. You know, and I think part of that for me is going to be we have to prioritize. If we try to include everything, um, we aren't really prioritizing at all. Um, and one of the things I'm very proud of is we could have had, you know, I've seen earlier versions of, of, um, strategic plans from districts that have more than 25. And we were able to approve five. And I think that, I think that's remarkable. Um, and wherever possible, I'd like to encourage us to prioritize. That's just me. And I think like everybody gets to vote the way that they want to, that they want to vote.
I understand.
Mr. Craig?
Yeah, I was going to say, I think what might be helpful for just the purposes of what we're doing with this particular amendment from Board Member Morosky is that I think it's helpful for us to go through, to do that one and then see kind of what the direction of the wording, what somebody would propose, if they propose any additional guardrails would look like. Because I think that also will give us more clarity to what Vice President Jones is speaking to as to whether or not something is going to be something that we would all agree to being a guardrail or if it's going to be something that we feel is already covered. It can be something we decide when that matter comes up to go through.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Craig. So what we have, we're in discussion on an amendment that was offered by Mr. Morosky. Last call for any discussion on the amendment before we vote on the amendment. Okay, so we were now, we're, here's to read one more time. We're, we're, the motion is to make the, um, main motion read as follows. The superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at school sites, semicolon, paying special attention to family involvement, period. We're, we are voting on the amendment. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So the motion now reads as I just read it, as that amendment passed. Are there any other amendments? See none. Um, we have had discussion on the main motion. It's been amended. We've had discussion on it. We're now going to vote on the main motion. I'm going to read it one last time. It is, the superintendent will not ignore district-wide chronic absenteeism at school sites, semicolon, paying special attention to family involvement, period. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the vote on that motion?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So that's five guardrails, all adopted, seven, zero, um, which is remarkable and thank you. Uh, is there a motion for, uh, any additional guardrails beyond the five? Ms. Bolton?
I have, uh, I believe a motion, uh, for a sixth guardrail. And, um, I, as we evolved the language, I think it's crucial perhaps to include, as our community did, the value of partnerships uh, and also, uh, access to our facilities and decision-making. Um, so I would suggest that, um, the superintendent will not, in the pursuit of equitable, in the pursuit of equity, uh, ignore the, uh, value and number of partnerships, access to facilities and decision-making at our school sites.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. So the motion on the floor that I have, and please correct any of this that's not right.
Well, please make it nicer.
Nope, this is your motion. Uh, the superintendent will not, in pursuit of equity, ignore the value and number of partnerships, comma, access to facilities, comma, and decision-making at our school sites. Did I get that right?
Yeah, value and number.
Value and number of partnership. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones for the second. Now we're in discussion on this motion. Dr. Moffett?
I just want to offer an amendment in that I want to focus on local. And, um, I think that we need to value local partnerships. There needs to be some priority there. There needs to be priority on local partnerships and local, um, can you read that again? Because I also think local hiring, um, as well should be a high priority. So local talent, but can you read what we have? Because maybe we can incorporate that.
So the, the motion introduced by Ms. Bolton is as follows. The superintendent will not, in pursuit of equity, ignore the value and number of partnerships, access to facilities and decision-making at our school sites, period.
I just would add, um, local partnerships and local talent.
So Dr. Moffett's offered that as an amendment and Ms. Bolton as other friendly amendment?
It's local. I was local talent. Well, uh, help me out.
So what, what I, and I'm not saying it has to be local, but I want some emphasis to be, I know that there are some, um, organizations that when you're, when you have like an R and P process, if you're a minority business or a female business, you get extra, extra points. I'm not suggesting that system, but there is prioritization for, um, people within that system, women, minorities. Um, and I want that same prioritization for local talent. I want that same prioritization for local partnerships. I'm not saying it has to be, but there needs to be first consideration.
And so I think that the, the discrete question is, like, if you want to add the word local before partnerships, is that a friendly amendment that the motion maker accepts?
Yeah, it more than that.
Well, okay, I started with local partnerships because that was there. I can also make another, um, um, guardrail later because I had one here with regard to talent. But I do believe local partnerships specifically could have some prioritization. So I only heard that part, when you said partnerships, and that's why I thought local could go there. But can you read what-
Yes, I think you're right. So I think the, the motion introduced by Ms. Bolton did not have the word local. There's an amendment on the floor to add the word local. There are two ways we can go. If that is a friendly amendment, we don't need to vote on it. If it's not a friendly amendment, we need somebody to second that amendment. We need discussion and then we're going to vote on the amendment. And so that, that's a question for Ms. Bolton.
It's not friendly.
So the, um, so then we need to, is there a second on the motion to amend by adding the word local in front of partnerships?
Well, is this an amendment or is this the addition of a guardrail?
So this is, there's, uh, this is, there's a proposed sixth guardrail that we have not voted on yet. We're not yet voting on whether or not to adopt a sixth guardrail. Uh, this is an amendment to change the language in the proposed sixth guardrail. And is there a second for that amendment? If there's no second, we're just going to move on.
So can you read it again?
Sure. So this is without the proposed amendment, the motion as introduced by Member Bolton says, the superintendent will not, in pursuit of equity, ignore the value and number of partnerships, access to facilities, and decision making at our school sites. Is there a second? Okay, so amendment is not going to get move any further. We can add, the next question will be, unless someone wants to second it, are there other amendments anybody would like to offer?
Hey, I'm confused. You read what the proposed guardrail was. I didn't hear local in there, I'm sorry.
That's right.
That was my amendment. Or was that not right?
So I've read it so many times, I'm losing track. The motion that's on the floor, the main motion, is from Ms. Bolton.
Okay.
It does not have the word local in it. There is a motion to amend it by adding the word local. There is currently not a second for that amendment. If there is not a second for that amendment, amendment will fail. We will ask, are there other amendments people would like to offer? If there is a second, we will then have discussion to see how people feel about that amendment, and we'll vote on it. So is there a second on the amendment to add the word local? Okay, so amendment fails. And now we'll ask, are there any other amendments to the motion made by Ms. Bolton? Okay, there are no other amendments. Mr. Craig?
I just, I mean, I don't know if it's an amendment, actually, but more of a comment.
Yeah, sorry, in discussion's fine, too. Any discussion on the motion from Ms. Bolton?
I think maybe one way that we can also tackle that idea that Dr. Moffett was talking about, but also keeping in line with where Member Bolton's proposal has been, is to, you know, maybe add something such as our community partners or something to that effect, ways we refer to them in the past as being our, because our partners, what we're really talking about is all the folks who work with our district, work in our community to help out. And so in some ways, these, a broader language of community might be a way to tackle some of that same idea or concept without it being something specific to providing any kind of preference in that idea. And so I don't know if that's something that would be open for others to think about, but I would offer that as maybe a possible friendly amendment. I don't necessarily believe that it's necessary. I think we understand it within regard to our partnerships, but adding something like community or community partnerships into the motion.
So this is this is a proposed change in language from instead of saying the value and number of local, excuse me, the value and number of partnerships, it would be the value and number of community partnerships, is your proposal, Mr. Craig? Is that a friendly amendment, Ms. Bolton? Okay, so the motion on the floor now reads as follows. This is a proposed sixth guardrail. We have not voted on whether to adopt it yet or not, but the proposal is superintendent will not, in pursuit of equity, ignore the value and number of community partnerships, access to facilities, and decision making at our school sites. Is there any other discussion on this proposed sixth guardrail? It sounded like Vice President Jones, you wanted to say something about priority setting.
Um.
I thought it was important, so I wanted to give you a chance to say anything.
Well, I'll just say it, since it's on my mind. I think where I'm getting hung up on all of this, and I'm prepared to vote, I'm prepared to vote, is that we seem to be forgetting that everything cannot be condensed in the guardrails and that we have a strategic plan which also addresses a vast sort of diversity of concerns, issues, strategy, whatever, and that we we're going to have that to work with. So as we're developing, I think what I'm saying is my preference is to not continue to add all these guardrails when people are saying, well, you know, people are struggling with the word nonnegotiable. And I heard somebody say the word, well, these are strengths or whatever, but so is the strategic plan. And the strategic plan will also have strategies with with goals for, you know, for that. And so, well, I'll, that's enough said, but I think that I want to just caution us against just continuing to add guardrails. I'm prepared to vote on the six one.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Ms. Bolton?
I agree that we shouldn't do this endlessly. My interest in the partnership piece in the name of equity is that that is something we heard throughout the focus groups. So as I said earlier in.
Not disagreeing.
Earlier in, that I would like our six guardrails or five guardrails and hopefully no more than half dozen to reflect, again, what the community told us.
Not disagreeing.
Cindy, are you available here? No, she's on.
I am.
Wait a second. Hey, thanks, Cindy.
Sure.
I'm trying to remember. My understanding was like the strong advice was to have your guardrails be three to five.
That's right.
And I can't remember exactly what the rationale was. I just wanted to see, is there anything you can share? Or maybe it's fine. You like, but is there any perspective you want to add as a from your point?
Yeah, so the recommendation is definitely more than one to five, no more than five. And it's exactly for the reasons that I've been hearing from Ms. Jones is that the prioritization, once you have more than five, it dilutes the focus. So when everything is made a priority, then nothing becomes a priority. So getting into and it also, it's also some of that research around priorities and the number of priorities that was done by Covey that the framework is based upon. So we really recommend not diluting the focus. And again, just like the goals, because it's not listed does not mean that it isn't, can't, won't be done. But the, what is in the guardrails should definitely be be the highest priorities, and we recommend no more than five.
Can you say that last part one last time, Cindy?
So the the five, we recommend no more than five, and it should be those values of the community that are prioritized into those five.
Got it. Thank you very much. Any other discussion before we vote? Vice President Jones?
I just want to make a statement that I hear her say, these are the guidelines that we suggest. I'm not hearing that it's not possible for us to have six.
Right.
And I think given that community partnerships has been sort of dominating the conversation by being in support that we included as a guardrail. So we should probably vote on that.
Okay, so absent this, yes, superintendent, please.
I just have one quick question as you are getting ready to vote. Can can we clarify the making piece at the end of when you read the entire? And I don't think it's one of these. I think it's a different one now. Can you just read it again?
Yeah, I think it's the one that's on the floor. So the motion that's on the floor reads as follows. The superintendent will not, in pursuit of equity, ignore the value and number of community partnerships, access to facilities, and decision making at our school sites. And I hear you asking, what does decision making at our school sites mean?
So the decision making at our school sites references the community partner. Is that is the reference to the community partnerships? If not, what is the decision making at the end? What is it referencing?
Ms. Bolton, could you speak to that?
It's it's not just the community partners, it's the community, it's the school community having access to decision making, participation or whatever, which, yeah. And I don't know that the way it's worded right now, to your point, that's that clear, but it's community, it's community access to facilities and the decision making at school sites. Might be the way to clarify that a little bit better.
Yes.
Because it's really not the community partnering, it's the school community having access to decision making.
Does that answer your question, Superintendent?
It does.
Can you then, Ms. Bolton, you're the motion maker. Can you just say that language again?
Darn.
This is it's superintendent will not, in pursuit of equity, ignore the value and number of community partnerships.
And local school decision making, what I'm hearing.
And community access to facilities and decision making, is that it? Mr. Craig will take care of it.
And local community. And local school decision making.
Local school decision making.
Is that is local school decision making, which you were thinking?
Yeah, at school or or that sound, that might be weird, but it's certainly decision making at school sites.
Well, I mean, we have LSD and C, that stands for locals.
I have to look at the original.
So here's the, as the as the motion maker, this is something you can you can do here.
Yeah.
The superintendent, in pursuit of equity, ignore the value and number of community partnerships, comma, community access to facilities, and decision making at school sites, period. Okay, so that is the motion. People can vote yes or no, but I want to ask Ms. Wagner to call the roll, please.
Can I catch up? Hold on.
But take your time, and I can read it back, too, if you need it again.
I think I got it. All right, Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, so we could be finished here or we could keep going. It is whatever the, there is certainly a risk that we could wind up with 11 or 12 or 15, but I think we should do what the majority of the board wants to do. So is there a motion for? Or any additional guardrails? Or are we good at?
So I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Clarification, because I, local talent, our minority vendors, and local partnerships. Perhaps it was not necessarily in the most favorite place before, but are we saying that that needs to be in the strategic plan versus the guardrails? I'm asking for clarification because I've sat on the strategic plan before, but I just wanted to understand where we put that as a priority because that also came up intermittently in some of the community voice as well.
Can you just say what the that is one more time? I missed the beginning. I was asking for clarity. I missed the beginning part. What's the that?
So I'm, I am concerned about local talent, local minority vendors, and local partnerships in decision making. So that's why I put that in there, in the voice as well. Though my question is, does that go into the strategic plan versus the guardrails discussion? Or would that be more apropos to put it in a guardrail? Is it better to have it in a strategic plan discussion around preference or specificity for local talent and vendors and minority suppliers?
Vice President Jones?
Yes, I think.
What a question. I thought that made it.
No.
No, you took, you didn't.
The original I through L. Wait a minute, hold on.
Okay, so L in that, okay.
Ms. Bolton is making a good point, which is that in L.
Okay, I got it, it's in L.
Okay, so are there, yeah, then go ahead, Dr. Moffett.
Okay, if I just want to add, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sound pretty redundant here, and I said it best, because it doesn't show up in guardrail, doesn't make it any less valuable. And and we do have a strategic plan, which should encompass across the board. I don't know how that the strategic, I don't know what it will look like, whatever, but I think everything that or most of the things that we gathered from our community sessions has value, everything, and that at some point it should reflect in a strategic plan, either in strategies, goals or strategies or however. And that was one of the reasons why I suggested probably two meetings ago that we gather all the parking lot discussion and and present that to the superintendent so that as we move forward with the strategic plan, we can make sure that we attend to, to pay attention to all those things that were not included as a guardrail. So that's just a statement.
But I think there were lots of really good and important ideas that came out of the focus groups that we want to make sure get considered, and we want to make sure that to the extent that they make a difference for kids and families and for our staff, we should follow them and that we do have to do some prioritizing at the macro level. Otherwise, we're not prioritizing anything. So we might be.
And now we are in the process of looking at this this last one.
We have, we have, we have adopted the sixth.
Okay.
And so I think unless someone wants to propose a seventh, we're going to keep going and talk about committees. Okay, good. So as we transition, I just want to say, Cindy, is there anything that you want to share? I want to certainly say, my colleague, Ms. Bolton, is fond of saying the, doing the public's business in public. And I think that's what the last hour has been. And I will share that person, from just from a personal perspective, there's a myth I would do if I were doing this on my own, and some things are different from what I would be doing if I were doing this on my own. And that's part of how a deliberative body works. Cindy, is there, I know your video pointed out, but if you hear us, is there anything that you want to share?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for their work this evening. One thing I would, my video was cutting out at various places, and it cut out right after I spoke last, as you were discussing that sixth guardrail. One of the things I did hear was the superintendent's question around that. What I would invite you all to consider, despite the fact that that sixth one was adopted, the superintendent is still going to have to go back now with a new guardrail and also with some of the wordsmithing that has been done to work on interim guardrails. So maybe to be flexible as far as some additional wordsmithing on that sixth guardrail once she has completed that work, might, you know, being open to that is something that I would recommend. But good work, everyone, and and thank you for, thank you for the dialogue and the conversation.
Thank you, Cindy. And thank you for all of your help and you and Leslie and Ray and the whole team.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it. And have a happy holiday, if we don't talk to you as a group before then.
Likewise.
Okay, so we're going to keep moving then to item two, which is our board committee structure for next calendar year 2023. This is timely because we have to get out to everybody a form asking for the requests for what committees you would like to be on. In order to do that, we also need to decide what committees we're going to have next year. I think there are two proposals that have been talked about. This board met over the summer and decided to essentially make the Student Achievement Committee a whole group because of its importance. And structure and the student achievement structure merged. There was, I think, some pretty strong consensus that policy and finance were important to continue. And then I think there was a decision to revisit the issue of the Health and Safety Committee before we started the next school year. Kind of work would likely require another ad hoc committee. So wherever we go now. So wherever, wherever we go next year, I think that it's entirely possible that there is a committee of board members who are working on reviewing the bylaws. I don't think we're making the decision tonight, but I think the, I think there are two paths forward, and in a minute, I just want to invite a motion on one of them, or a third one, that one version of next year, and we're talking now just about standing committees, not, not ad hoc committees, but that the version one is we would have two standing committees, the Standing Committee for Policy and the Standing Committee for Finance. The option two, that has also been discussed, and I think the Health and Safety Committee was recommending, is that there be three standing committees next year, that would be Finance, Policy, and then Health and Safety. And I think we should work through this the same way we've worked through other things, which is invite somebody to make a motion, see if there's a second, have discussion, and then take a vote. Do you have a question, Superintendent, or a thought?
I do have a question. I don't know if it was in the last business meeting or if it was in the, one of the other meetings, but in the conversation, Vice President asked that I also kind of bring what a proposed, what some of the, what the cadence would be, so to speak, that I would use through Cal to share information, so I don't know if that would be shared now.
Why don't you share that now? I think it'll help inform a lot of the discussion.
Can I make a suggestion, though, around that? Rather than do that now, I think you're proposing that we vote on the standing committees, and if we're considering, is, is Student Achievement Committee of the Whole being considered a standard committee of the board, or is it just a committee of the whole, which is separate? And if it is considered, because it's a business meeting, and if we do that, the, the standing committees first and decide, and then decide to adopt the Student Committee of the Whole, and then I think it would be appropriate for her, and yes, that was one of the questions that we had.
I think these things can go together fairly nicely, and I think you raise a good point, Vice President Jones. I think, well, I think you make a good point. The, really, there are, I tend to think of them as a board meeting, but usually they're not. I think you're right. There would be three standing committees in proposal one, a Standing Committee for Policy, for Finance, and then the Committee of the Whole Student Achievement. That's correct, I was wrong. And I think that the second proposal is to have those three, and then also continue Health and Safety. And the reason I think this just could be helpful is, is people are thinking about what makes the most stiff. I do think hearing some of this from the superintendent could be really helpful.
Okay.
So we will turn it over to our superintendent.
Okay, so one of the things that I was asked to bring was just how we might think about, and this, this doesn't have, this is not completely comprehensive of everything that we would discuss, but how we would think about information that I would like to share with the entire board. And as, as was shared with me, my opportunity to really do that is through the Cal meetings. And so this gives an idea of the things that we would share quarterly, what we would share by the semester, and then what would overall be by the year. And just because of the conversations that we've had, information that would be relevant across the boards to everyone is what's included here. So just to break, I think it's pretty, it's self-explanatory in terms of what it's talking about, but overall bullying, that's been a topic that we've discussed collectively, and then, you know, college preparation, any college-going activities that would go along with that, curriculum updates by department, as well as any equity updates that we would have, discipline data for review for the entire board, and any safety updates. So thinking about that on a quarterly cadence, and then from there, going into the semester, a part of the reason for academic BOI, beginning of year, middle of year, end of year data, because that's, that's the cadence in which we take our assessments. So after each assessment cycle, the opportunity to share that data with the board, talk through it, much like we did in one of the meetings that we've had here. The, the ACT, that process, happens closer to the end of, it happens in October and then again in the spring, and so being able to provide updates on that as well. And, you know, just, so, so I, I think that this information is, 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 is clear. Yearly, CLCs, what we're doing within our community learning centers, code of conduct comes to the board yearly as well, the school calendar, the overall state report card.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. So is there anybody who would like to make a motion for which committees we do have for next year? Vice President Jones?
I don't, I'm not prepared, I'm not ready to make the motion yet, but if, can I add, since she brought it up, and, and I think this is really helpful, but I took, as the former chair, a student achievement, I took the opportunity to kind of run through our work plan and our calendar of the things that, for consideration, not saying that we have to include it, but consideration. And I put these, and there are 18 things on here, and there's a lot of overlap from this. So I just kind of wanted to read real quickly what I have on here, and I'm happy to share the list with the superintendent and with board members. And the reason why a lot of these got on here is because we get a lot of, or members get a lot of emails from parents with specific concerns around some of these things specifically, and I do think that they warrant response, and they also warrant sort of a, a broader presentation and view, because we tend to get the same questions. And I'll give an example, the Warner Hills test. Now, that was a student achievement item, and it, it may be helpful at some point, and I'm not, and the superintendent can decide how that gets presented, but it might be helpful to present that yearly, and, and so that people understand. But I wanted to, to name these to see if board members were okay with what's on here, make sure the superintendent gets it, and then she can determine how she wants to present some of these things. And like I said, a lot of these are overlapping, so if I could take just a minute, I promise it won't take long.
I think it's great.
Okay.
It doesn't matter what I think, by the way, but please.
I put on here, student achievement outcomes specifically related to your presentation last night, academics, behavior, culture, curriculum, instructional development and access, graduation update and audits, teacher pipeline, college and career readiness, school capacity and enrollment, early childhood education and kindergarten readiness, community engagement, student-centered decision-making, programs, services and supports, fine arts and extracurricular activities, diversity, equity, inclusion, state standards slash state report card, testing and assessment, program performance and evaluation, resource allocation, management, and the district calendar. And like I said, there's a lot of overlap, but there are some things that were addressed in student achievement that didn't make this list, and I think the, the superintendent can certainly prioritize and determine how that gets scheduled. So I'm happy to send this to you.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Superintendent?
Sure, and thank you, Vice President. I also used the work plan to include the information that was covered. I did not call out specifically early childhood or kindergarten readiness, because I included that in my head, I guess I should have written it, but I included it in the academic data review, because we do test the students on the same cadence.
Okay.
So, and I'll, I'll get the other ones that were shared if we decide to go that, if the board decides to go that direction.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Other questions or comments before? I think we, we're gonna move forward at some point, so we'll have to have a motion, but if other people have thoughts, Dr. Moffett?
So I, I would, I really have some concerns that we moved student achievement to the Cal. I didn't at first, but I would like to know the number of times since we've dissolved student achievement, that we have turned a Cal into a business meeting. Because that is concerning to me, that we're not getting the academic, that, that student achievement is not getting what I believe the attention that it should. Now, I don't know if it should, if it should get two hours, I think it should, but it seems as if it has become something that, A, is a priority for, it, it's the responsibility of board members, and it, it also warrants more than just 30 minutes or less of a discussion. And so can you tell me how many times we've turned a Cal since August, maybe? How many times we've turned it into a, a business meeting, or a special meeting, or something other than student achievement? Do we have that number?
I'm not sure, but Vice President Jones, you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I don't have a number, and, and I understand what Board Member Moffett is saying, and it's actually on my list, and I was gonna wait until the opportunity came up, but I agree with that, that we must prioritize the, the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole as such. However, I don't want to be remiss to say that we don't have other things that we have to do. And I think that what, what happens, and we, some of us who have been here for a while, Eve, Eve and I, we've been here where we've had Cal and it gets sidetracked a lot of times for different reasons. But I think that there is a way to work it out so that we are giving it priority. We, we, I would suggest it's Student Achievement Committee of the Whole every single day that it comes up. If we do have to have a business component, we can always add that. And I recognize the urgency and the importance of even doing what we did with the goals and guardrails, that it had to happen today. There are some things that we have to do to take care of the board's business and the district's business. So I agree with, with you. I do feel like it has to be prioritized around it being Student Achievement Committee of the Whole.
But, but I would just, President Lindy, I, I would like an answer to my question. Somebody can, can find out the answer. I don't want it to just be blown over. How many times, I think, out of four months, have we turned a Cal, student achievement, into a business meeting? So we, we'll, somebody get that, that number. That's important to me.
I think it's probably available on past agendas. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think it's a point well taken. I think, too, it's very likely that, that 90-minute limit wouldn't exist if indeed it's the, you know, might as well just say it from the front, but another way to address it is for us to investigate, like other boards do, consent calendars. And if we could get to a consent calendar, we would not be spending all this time, on, public's time even, on stuff that is very rudimentary and could be dealt with elsewhere. So I think there's, there's ways to address it, but I, I do like the value of having staff in the middle of the day available, if the superintendent would need them, to help present. I do like the idea that all board members would be getting the student achievement information that dates back to our first kind of discussion we had with Great City Schools. So I think there might be some ways to address it that would be of value, but I would say probably at least half the time to your, to your answer, but consent calendar could help us with that, and also just not even pretending that it's 90 minutes and we leave.
So I think, yeah, we can, I want to, two things feel true at once. One is, this is an important conversation, I don't want to, the other is, it is 5:24, and I think we should get a motion on the table. People are gonna want to make arguments on both sides, so could we just say like one more minute each for anybody who wants to speak on this, and then we'll keep going? Vice President Jones?
You can pass on me, because I forgot just a quick, but.
Okay. Mrs. Weinberg?
So I wanted to make sure for the motion, if you could repeat, you said that there were two options, A and B, and then after you said that, I do have a follow-up question to Board Member Moffett as well. What are the two options?
Absolutely, so I think option A would be a world where we have three standing committees. The standing committees are Student Achievement Committee of the Whole, Policy, Finance.
And then option B?
Option B is we have four standing committees.
Okay.
Those three, plus a Health and Safety Committee.
Okay. Then my question, my follow-up question, Board Member Moffett, you asked the question about how many meetings have been changed from Committee of the Whole, and I, I do know, President Lindy, you stated that we could look at the agenda, but I do think that there is a way to quickly come up with that answer. Is there a way that we can get an answer? Because I am curious as well, too, how many meetings have been changed over the past year. So is there a way that maybe Phyllis can get that information, maybe Pat, someone can get it to us during this particular meeting, so that answer can be given back to Board Member Moffett?
It looks like Mr. Morosky might already know. No?
Not solid, not solid.
No.
But it is related to that.
Yeah, we could, we could ask Patrick Phyllis if that's possible, if you want to just, you got the number? What, what's the number?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That sounds like about half. Okay. And, Ms. Weinberg, did you have other comments?
Nope, that's my other question, and then I will come back and make a motion.
Okay.
Or remember Morosky?
Just a couple comments. So I was thinking it was two or three, so it's three. I agree with Dr. Moffett in the, in the spirit of, we want to keep those Cows, what we said, we would keep them. My, but I would, I would just add that my recollection of every time we did make them a special meeting, we, we still had academic updates, we just made them a special meeting so we could vote to approve a treasures report or something. So my, my take, when we've done that, to, to Vice President Jones's point of other things we have to do, was that we, we did, in fact, maintain the integrity of the Cal. Maybe not tonight as much, because we had to do the governance, but the other two, we had presentations, we had talked about items that were relative, you know, germane to these topics here. But I do think it is important that if we do change them, that it does remain student achievement. We also didn't have this.
Right, exactly.
I think that's helpful, too.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Anybody else before we have a motion? Ms. Weinberg, did you want to make a motion?
I will make the motion. Thank you, Superintendent, for providing this. I am gonna still stick with the motion of, I think it was option B, in terms of having the four standing committees, which would include Health and Safety. I see here that there are some topics that you have listed that fall within the work plan of Health and Safety as well, so there is some overlap, but I'm still willing to go with the motion of recommending the four standing committees to include Health and Safety.
So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion?
Yep.
Mr. Morosky?
I know this was in the other meeting, so it's a question for anybody on Health and Safety, a chair or members. Could you just remind us the rationale for keeping Health and Safety? I'm not opposed, let me put that out there, like, I don't have, but, why, why, why do we need it?
I can just add a little bit, and then I can open it up to my other committee members as well, if they would like to add. I just think throughout this whole entire year, especially since last year with COVID, I'm happy that we don't have that going on right now in the extreme. But I will say, with the different topics that we had in Health and Safety, I do think it's very important, not only for the public, but also the committee members and working with administration to really hit those target topics that they have in place. And I know that we have received information through, whether it's emails, whether it's from my colleagues, that these are still important topics that still need to be discussed and still need to be considered on a committee as well.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Did you have other comments or questions?
I want to see if they want to.
So what I, what I've found is, in reviewing the information from the community, in those 36 pages, mental health is included for the community on the, the well-being of the child. And there's a huge influx of interest from parents and community members on what is the district doing and how can, how can that be maintained? So the mental health piece is pretty significant, and I think to have dedicated time regarding mental health and the physical health of our kids, we're not really done with COVID, we're not done with RSV and those things that are, that are impacting the physical well-being of kids. And then also, school safety, to me, is a very big issue. You brought up the, the swatting, having to have a dedicated space for school safety issues and the physical and mental well-being of our kids, I think shows the community that we are dedicating time and attention to that. Now, I maybe would be even open to having it every other month, or if, if Board Member Weinberg looked at that as far as reserving time, but I think that it tells our community that we are not only, it's not just a line item, but that we are giving space and time to those, to those things that are, that they've told us are important.
Other discussion on the motion? Ms. Bolton? Oh, sorry, Mr. Morosky, you have the floor. Were you finished?
No, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you for that, and thank you for letting me ask that to, I know it was repetitive from last time, so I appreciate it. My second question is, and we do not have to figure this out tonight, I just want to put it out there, and I've said this before here and in our retreats and other sort of places, the wisdom of having the lobbyists in Health and Safety, I'd like to maybe re-look at that. I'm, I'm up, I'm up for voting for this motion, but I think that needs to be addressed, and I think we all, as a board, need to be far more involved in that, and quite frankly, I think Health and Safety, I'm not dumb enough to speak for Chair Weinberg. or anybody else, but like, it would free up time to, the issues you're talking about are the issues, right? So I think that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Bolton?
To Mr. Morosky's position on that, I would ask if the motion maker would be up for a friendly amendment for that motion to begin to exclude the lobbyist portion, participation in Health and Safety, and relieve, return that to the administration and the administration helping advance that information to us. So indeed, we could be, after the weeks or so that we've had, especially recently, I think Health and Safety needs that priority. And obviously, we've been very involved in all the political kind of stuff that's been needed. So I would ask if a friendly amendment would be made to that motion.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes, I would accept a friendly amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Vice President Jones?
Yes, I just wanted to add something real quickly. We did have, we had a discussion about us doing that. So I think that it's good that we're making a decision on it. I think in making that decision, one thing I would suggest, especially because if we want to advocate on the state level in support or in opposition to something, we really have to know in enough time that we can act on it. Like, we didn't get the opportunity, I believe, to submit anything on House Bill, yeah, 178, and then the things that we have on here tonight have already been acted on. I think the rationale, one of the justifications for the government liaison's meeting with the superintendent, and we're hoping that that will help us to help them to get that more in front of the issue, so that we can have time to process and advocate as we deem appropriate. So, yeah, I would support that.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Dr. Moffett?
So I, having had them come to the last Health and Safety meetings and give us information that was, that needed immediate attention, I think that it is prudent that they come to the administration. But I also think that that could be a place where they come to the COW, because we're all there hearing information at the same time. I think that they should be coming to the board, because there were things that we could do as electeds, and that I think that we should be made aware of immediately when they happen. So I would even love to have them come to a COW and report directly to the board as well.
I'm putting it on my list. Is that okay?
Sounds good to me. So I think we have a motion, it's been seconded, people can vote for it, they can vote against it. I think, for, anybody, Brandon, did you want to go? Or Mr. Craig, before I go?
I'll just say one real quick, and that is that I think, you know, I think the motion on the floor is a good idea, and I love the friendly amendment that was added to it. And I would just, you know, maybe reiterate something that Member Bolton has been saying for a while, which is that we also need to make sure that we're establishing what each of the committees is tasked with doing. And so it's not necessarily something that changes anything about the amendment or about the motion, but it's really something for us to be aware of as we're talking about these different committees, is that we have committees that have great work plans, that also need to be focused around what the next strategic plan will look like, what we're committing to doing as a district. And so just ensuring that we're all keeping that in the back of our minds as we go forth.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Dr. Moffett, you said something earlier about the idea of, I'll make sure I heard this right, the Health and Safety Committee possibly meeting every other month instead of every month. Can you say a little more about that?
Well, to be completely honest with you, I think our time is so precious, and there were times when we probably could have combined a meeting. So I would like to say that maybe Health and Safety could meet, they can set their own cadence, but it would not seem unrealistic to me to have Health and Safety meet once every other month or once a quarter, based upon, you know, however the committee members decide. But I don't think it has to be, I think it's needed, but I don't think it has to be a monthly meeting. I think it could very well be just as efficient with an agenda that meets every other month.
I wanted to just co-sign that, and I agree 100%. And who knows who's going to be on what committee? But I was trying to hear, would you like what we're voting on tonight to reflect that, like we did with the lobbyist, or not? I don't know if anybody really feels like the committee has to meet every month. It might be that we all agree about this. Seems like we all agree about this. We don't have to change anything. We could if you wanted to, but I think...
Sure. No, I think it could be set by the members, because I think it's, you know, however they decide to do it is fine, but the expectation is not that it has to be monthly.
So that there could be, if this does pass, that the committee members would determine with next year, like, whether that could be even quarterly or every other month or something?
Included in work plan.
Including in the work plan. Yeah. Yeah. Any other discussion on the amendment that's on the floor? Okay. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Bolton?
Aye, I think.
You think? Do you want clarity on what the motion is?
This is, please do. Please clarify.
Okay. The motion that is being, this vote, is about that the committee structure next year should be as follows. There will be four standing committees. The first one is Student Achievement Committee of the Whole. The second, Policy. The third, Finance. The fourth, Health and Safety, with the understanding that two things are true about it. One, it will not be the regular home of lobbyists. And second, the committee members will determine cadence. So it may not be every month, it may be every other month, maybe once a quarter, but as determined by the members and in alignment with a work plan.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Ms. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay. We're going to keep moving here. We could talk a lot about the two resolutions that are on here. They are both important. I want to create a moment for that, but also would love us to still recess into executive session, have our vote on our superintendent's recommendations and Treasurers Report, and try to get folks out, you know, when we can, but as close to our original intention as possible. So is there a motion to adopt this first resolution opposing the restructuring of the State Board of Education in the Ohio Department of Ed?
Don't move.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a second? Second. And with the understanding that we could talk a great deal about this, for a minute or two, is there anybody who would like to say something about this motion? Vice President Jones?
One of the ones that has already passed? Has this already passed?
No, it's moved very quick.
I don't think so. Not this one. Mr. Hoen, if you would like, if you, you certainly know more about this than I do.
I almost lost him.
Thank you very much for speaking to us about this.
I checked the status this afternoon. I believe the bill has passed the Senate. It was referred to the House Committee on Primary and Secondary Education. I believe it was on its third hearing, I believe that's correct, today. I did not hear the result of whether it passed the committee today or whether it's still being discussed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hoen. Mr. Hoen, you might hang around for just a second, in case we have questions on the next motion. Any other discussion on this resolution? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Ms. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt the second resolution on the agenda? This is a resolution opposing a recent State Board resolution, which was itself opposing a federal change in the interpretation of Title IX?
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion? I would like to say something that nobody else does, and I will be quick. But I think that one of the reasons I am proud to serve as a board member for Cincinnati Public Schools is our longstanding commitment to equity and inclusion. I'm a proud member of the first year Walnut Hills High School had a Gay-Straight Alliance, which was in 1997, which was a time before that was a thing that existed very often. I can take no credit for that group's founding. That credit belongs to Mark Musman and his friends. But I was proud to be there, and I'm proud of our district's stance on LGBTQIA+ inclusion. And I think that we want all kids to feel welcome here in Cincinnati Public Schools, and I'm proudly supporting this resolution. Any other discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I think it's very important for our community in this district to recognize that their elected school board continues to operate, very frankly, outside the very narrowly defined constraints that both our State Board of Education and our state legislature is trying to force our children and our instructors and our families into. And ultimately, there's going to be push come to shove. And I feel very strongly this board and this district will honor its history and do what's right.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Dr. Moffett?
So I, we had an opportunity to hear from community members last board meeting, and I've heard from a lot of people about this before today. And I'm very proud to stand with my other colleagues on supporting this. This particular, this just undermines our existing equity and inclusion policy. And we pride ourselves that we are providing safe spaces for children, for all of our students, including our trans students, including our students, just all students. And so I'm saddened that this has come on a state level, but I'm happy to support this along with my colleagues and ensuring that our schools are safe spaces for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Ms. Weinberg?
And I would just add that I am also happy to have my colleagues as well, for us to come together and really come up with this resolution to oppose what the state has put into place. And I'm just happy that this district came forward with this. So thank you all.
Mr. Morosky?
You guys all inspire me, geez. I come from a place, I was in education for 13 years in a school building, as some people may know. And it was a place, in the year 2013, you still were not allowed to believe that gay people shall be allowed to be married. In 2022, the employees of those schools still are not allowed to believe gay people are allowed to be married. They're forced to sign contracts that say that in this year, which makes me even prouder to be here with all of you. And Ms. Bolton said it very well, you all have heard me say it a lot, and, but the fact does remain that our state legislature doesn't like our kids, and that's a hard reality. And the unfortunate part about this is that in districts like this who do care about kids and families, you know, we're spending our time doing this instead of being proactive about caring about our kids, which I think is sad. But I also am proud, at the same time that we do it and do take the time to do it, because it is important for families to know, again, to quote Ms. Bolton or paraphrase Ms. Bolton, that we're going to do whatever it takes to keep your kids safe and make them feel good at school and comfortable at school, and to hell with the state government.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Ms. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So as we transition out of the Resolution section, just one admission on my part, I wanted, did you want to thank Betsy Shank, who was the teacher at Walnut Hills, who was the advisor for that club? And not every teacher in that building at the time would have done that, and she did. And I wanted to make sure I thanked her for that. Okay. I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider employment of a public employee or official in pending litigation, please.
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Ms. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So thank you all for being in here. I'm going to ask everybody to give us the room here for a little bit. I think hopefully about 15 minutes. We shall see. And then we'll continue with the rest of our agenda.
Welcome back, everybody. Thank you very much. We are out of executive session and back in our regular business meeting. I need a motion to adopt the recommendations of the superintendent.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Under discussion, do we have any retirements tonight?
We do.
We read a couple retirements, Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes, yes, yes. So we do have some retirements tonight. Get my screen ready. We have several civil service personnel. I'm going to begin with Deborah Chambers, Assistant School Community Coordinator from Hartwell. We have Danny Love, the Level One Building Engineer within facilities. Robin Jones, Security at Taff High School. Lisa Rollinson, Specialist Treasurer. Derek Rawls, a paraprofessional from South Avondale. Susan Ruhlman, an Assistant School Community Coordinator in early childhood. We have Jeffrey Thompson, a custodian in facilities. Lavanna Williams, a lunchroom manager at Hayes Porter. And we have Shirley Willis, a paraprofessional at Fairview. So we would like to wish all of these individuals, I guess, best endeavors and thank them for their service, for our students, and for all that they have done for this district.
Thank you very much. We had a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the recommendations of the superintendent? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt the report of the treasurer, please? Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who seconded me.
The Vice President.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Having no other business before us, before we close, this is our last meeting in calendar year 2022. Mr. Morosky has returned. We finished all the business without you, buddy. I just wanted to say have a happy holiday season to everyone. Thank you for everything you do for our students and their families and our staff. Happy holidays. Meeting is adjourned.